Okay. We'll call to order the city commission meeting of July 18th. First item on our agenda is roll call.
Mayor Hanes?
Present.
Commissioner Locke?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
Commissioner Badway?
Here.
And Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Next would be invocation. Chase, would you lead us there?
If y'all pray with me. Lord heavenly father, we just thank you for this opportunity for us to come together this evening to serve our community. We pray your blessings over our community, our state, our country and our world and we just lift up the men and women who continue to serve our country and we just thank you for this time together and we pray this in your son Jesus holy name. Amen.
All right. Pledge of allegiance.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Personal appearances was the next thing on our agenda. We have listed here Karen Lynn from Bebrick, Berbrick, I don't know how you pronounce that, if you would.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Karen Lynn with Berbrick, Cherry Hand, and I'm here to give the report for you on the audit. I believe you had copies of the audit report and the report that summarizes all of the conclusions from the audit process and I'd like to take a moment to go through that second summarized report with you. So first, our responsibility is to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and also because you received some federal dollars, we're also required to perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards and the Comptroller General of the United States. We also, as a municipality within the state of Kansas, so we are required to do some procedures from the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide mainly related to statutory compliance and things like that. All of those standards require that we plan and perform the audit so that we can form an opinion and provide an opinion at the end of the audit process as to whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. We were able to issue an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of opinion that can be given to a set of financial statements. As a part of the process of the audit, we also look at accounting policies and practices to make sure that they are appropriate and that they're consistently applied from one year to the next. There were no, what I would call, internal policies that were amended or newly adopted related to the financial accounting practices that we need to bring to your attention, but there was one new governmental accounting standards board statement, number 72, related to fair value measurements and their application that was applied during the current year. That particular standard did not change any financial statement numbers or presentation within the financial statements other than some additional disclosure items that were required to be reported in the footnotes. And so that information is reflected there. Other things that we will look at during the audit process are any significant or unusual transactions or those for which there's not authoritative guidance. If there was anything that fell into that category, we would bring that to your information and also review it and make sure that it was appropriately handled, but there was nothing that was considered to be a significant or unusual item fitting that definition that we need to review or bring to your attention. We also look at items within the financial statements that are considered to be estimates or those that are reliant specifically on management making a judgment as to the financial statement amount. There are many estimates that are included in the financial statements, but there are only a few that rise to the level of being considered a significant estimate. And those we have reported in this packet on page four, and they include the accrued self-insurance claims, the water storage space, and the other post-employment benefit obligation liability that's recorded in the financial statements. And the last one that we have is the net pension liability, which if you remember, last year was the first year that we reported that and that was related to the city's proportionate share of the capers unfunded obligation. Those are all considered to be significant estimates and we review the process that is used to identify the amount that is then recorded on the financial statements and we determined that those processes and the final recorded amounts were appropriate. We did identify some audit adjustments that were made during the audit process. These are again included in this packet and they are there for your information to identify for you the types of audit adjustments that were made as part of the audit process. Similarly, we identified some of what we call uncorrected misstatements, some adjusting journal entries that we didn't make to the financial statements because they are not significant and not material enough to the financial statements to make. But we did identify some and those are also included in the packet in the final pages and those pages are titled summary of past adjustments. Other things we would bring to your attention throughout the audit process, if there were any issues or difficulties obtaining information, any disagreements, just anything in general that would be an issue or a red flag of other things that would be problematic during the audit process, we will be sure to bring those to your attention as the governing body. Obviously, anything that would fit into any of those categories could be a red flag or an indication of more serious issues that we would want to bring to your attention as soon as they came to ours. We did not have anything at all that fit into those categories as has always been the case. Great cooperation, preparedness for the audit process. The audit process goes very well and there was nothing along those lines that we need to bring to your attention. Tammy Schaefer and her team do a great job pulling together all the information that we need for the audit process. We did identify a significant deficiency in internal control over financial reporting. This is similar to one that we talked about in the prior year. Related to the audit adjustments that we made, our auditing standards require that if we have audit adjustments made to the financial statements, that we are required to report a significant deficiency in internal control over financial reporting. So we have reported that this year. It's in the larger document detailed in one of the last pages, approximately page 128 or 29 is where you find that. And as I said, that's consistent with what we had reported in the prior year. The last item to bring to your attention is the management's representation letter. This letter is also in this packet. It's on the city's letterhead and it identifies things that we discussed during the audit process, that things that are underlying the financial statements. It's a required part of our audit standards that those things are all put in writing. And the signature on that letter is then the indication that the city is ready to finalize the report, which was done several weeks ago. The date that that letter is signed is also the date that becomes the date we put on our audit, our unmodified audit opinion. So that letter is in here for your reference and we do encourage you, as I have in the past, to encourage you to read through that letter. There's a lot of information in there that can help you as you read through the financial statements to help you digest all of this large financial statement packet that does have a lot of information in it. And we hope that it can help you with that and also with your fiduciary responsibility in terms of financial matters. So those are the conclusions that I want to share with you this evening and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Is your office right off Burlingame Road?
Yes.
I've seen your sign.
Yes. Can't see the building from the road.
No, but you see the sign. The questions I have, I guess particularly, you talked through that the audit primarily is, seems to be mechanical in nature, make sure everything is, all processes are right, all guidelines are followed, that kind of thing. Do you spend time with policies as well to make sure that some of the policies we have is adopted as a city fit with some of our fund balances and that kind of thing?
We look at policies as they relate to financial accounting matters. So if there are anything, there are many policies that don't relate specifically and the objective of the audit is to form the opinion about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. So as the policies relate to that objective of the audit, then we would take a look at them.
Okay. Thank you. There's no action taken on this, it's just received this. Will we be formally accepting this document later or is this just receiving it? This is it. Okay, there's not an adoption process, just accepting it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you very much.
Good job Tammy. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Anybody from the public wish to address the commission? If you would please state your name and address. Since here we have three minutes to present, you said you talked about you needing five, so well, I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you. I'm Diane Solorio. My address is 1831 Circle Drive. I am here today because I am the director of Homestead of El Dorado, which is an assisted living, it's formerly vintage place, at 1650 East 12th. On July the 3rd, around 11:30 in the morning, one of my staff members came in after a break and said to me, should there be water pouring out of the brick wall? Probably not. So we went out and looked and sure enough, we had a major water leak. So we called the city to come out and they got our water shut off. And long story short, you have some men that worked tirelessly for me that day to make sure that we stayed within our state guidelines, that we were never without water, that they tried very hard to find the access of the leak to get it capped for us. And I just want to publicly thank them and their department for that. And their names are Jason Adams, Kyle Davis, Carter Stevenson, Miguel Blanco Diaz, Alan Stahlnecker, Scott Rickert, Eric Tharp, and then Tad Slessinger was on call throughout the holiday. And he came and specifically talked to me and said, if you need anything, please call me. We are here for you. This is an important business. And I truly believe that everybody was there with one thought in mind that the people that live in an assisted living need water, they need to be cared for, they need to be able to flush their toilets, they need to be able to shower if necessary. And what these gentlemen did for us was they rerouted the water from our duplexes so that we were able to have running water through the holiday before we could get the plumbing company in to reroute it and fix it. And I just, I'm a hometown girl, I love El Dorado, I love the people here and I just want to say thank you. So, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks.
And thanks for all those guys. I appreciated them.
Appreciate that a lot. Thanks. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Fred Krupp of 2001 West Twanda. What I'd like to know is what's the interest rate on that project?
I'll have to get back with you Fred.
You told me that two weeks ago today.
Yeah, I apologize. What Mr. Krupp is asking is the interest rate on the specials for the pavement at Twanda Avenue. Has some questions and...
Well, you got an idea?
I hate to quote you something off the top of my head. I'd say best if we could just schedule a time to sit down and meet and go through that and I can get you all that information.
Well, you told me the other day you thought it was 2%. 2% would only be on 42,000 would be around $40 a year. And when I paid the taxes this year, mine was 400 and, hmm, yeah, I lost it. 400 and some dollars anyway for the year. Over $400, it should have only been less than 40, around 40. Oh, 467, 80 for the year. Well, two and a half years, you know, I'll have the interest paid off.
And what I'll get you, and like I told you, Mr. Krupp, is we'll get you amortization schedule that shows all that.
God, it couldn't start out at 400 and some dollars.
Well, I'll get that for you and I'll be able to show you how that's all calculated and the interest is compounded and...
If there's gonna be anything like that, I'll just pay it off.
And you're more than welcome to do that as well.
And Scott, you guys can have this meeting probably tomorrow or yet this week?
Yeah.
Yeah. And just give me a call and make sure I'm in the office and have some free time.
Yeah, because that's way out of line. I don't care if it examine rises or not. 21% to start with, can't ever get down to zero doing that.
I'll be happy to be with you. I apologize I haven't gotten back with you, so...
Okay. Several people like to have the amortization of it, but you guys never did send anything out that told what the interest rate was going to be on them.
Yeah, and a lot of times, we don't know that because we don't go borrow the money and go long-term debt financing or go to bond until after we've already spread the assessments and you all have been notified with that letter that you probably have with you that stated your total obligation for the project.
Yeah, that's a total is all you give us. You know, well, you should have said now the interest deal later on, let people know.
Well, you can connect with that. Scott can have that information for you in the next minute.
Yep.
When you call.
Just give me a call in the morning.
In the morning?
Yep, and then we'll see what my schedule looks like and get you set up.
Okay. I'll stay in the morning. Okay, I think I got it.
Okay.
Thank you Fred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? If none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are listed on the agenda which was forwarded out and everybody's had a chance to review that. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda as presented, be approved.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll move, since no old business, we'll move to new business. Next item is item 12, which is a special use permit for 1134 South Emporia.
Yes, Commissioner.
Who wish to address that?
I'll give you a brief presentation. The property owner of 1134 South Emporia requested a special use permit to allow an accessory structure larger than 1,200 feet, square feet. That's our current maximum size above that, you need a special use regulation. And the same with the sidewall, he's requesting a 14 feet foot sidewall. The planning commission held a public hearing on June 22nd and voted six to zero and to recommend approval to you.
Any questions from the commission on this? If none, I'd entertain a motion.
Consent ordinance number 1255. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve case number 17-003-RDZ, requesting a SUP for an accessory structure measuring 1,500 square feet in total area and 14 feet in height at the sidewall and then ordinance number G1255 be approved.
Second it. Okay, so we move in second. Any further comment? Roll call.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Hanes?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda is CDBG housing application.
Yes, what we're asking you tonight, we briefly discussed as Linda Jolly and myself did with you all at your last work session, is we're asking you to consider setting a public hearing for August 7th for the application of the CDBG housing grant for the city of El Dorado. Make my way to the podium, I'll pull up a map of the target area that we propose. Basically, the area, well, the area is bordered to the north by Third Avenue, south is Central Avenue, to the east is Gordy Street and to the west is Emporia Street. We think this is a good area to start. Linda's identified this as a depressed census tract area, an area in a lot of need. It's close to our core and we think it's a good place to start out as if we continue applying for CDBG grants in the future, we think this is one of the ideals, best locations to start. A lot of you are familiar with the process, we went through this last year. Unfortunately, our application was not successful and the feedback we got was last year our targeted area was just too large. They like to see impact in a smaller area.
Looking at this area, it is the northernmost portion of that secondary distress census tract that is actually defined by HUD, I believe. So we have the opportunity to start here and in continuing years, move through the census tract and then move on to other areas in the community. We have 81 owner occupied, single-family homes in this area and we have 65 rental properties, also single-family. The duplexes, quads and things are not eligible for this grant. This is a rehabilitation grant. It provides the opportunity for the housing to receive assistance along the lines of weatherization, roofs, foundation structure, electrical and things. It is not a remodeling program. The landlord in the application is required to pay 25% of the cost of the improvements. We'll use a grant administrator that will oversee the actual work that is done, they'll solicit the bids, oversee the work and do the inspections. We have determined that the city's required to pay $2,000 of the actual administration fees, the rest can be rolled into the grant itself. We anticipate doing 11 homes with that 80/60 split, we're going to look at doing six owner occupied, five rental properties and potentially two demolitions. We did last week get a pre-application sent out to every homeowner and rental property owner in that district and we are starting to see these pre-applications come back as of yesterday. So I think we got them out Thursday and Friday, so they're coming back fairly quickly, just expressing an interest, then the grant goes in at the end of August. We hope to have our public hearing with you on August 7th and then we'll hear something around the end of the year, December, maybe early January, and we'll see projects actually begin around March or April.
Okay. Well, I think as we discussed at our work session, this is the target area, it was agreed to be a good first step. Any other questions of the commission to Scott or Linda?
We will try to, this question gets brought up, we will try to work with the grant administrator and make sure we get as many local contractors involved as possible and make sure those folks get a chance. There is some extra paperwork and things that go along with that, but definitely want those folks involved in this.
Okay, good.
So if they hear about the program or have interest, definitely have them let us know.
So our action tonight, it would be to set up public hearing for the August 7 meeting for this area. Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to set the public hearing for 6:30 PM on August 7th, 2017, to be held to discuss applying for the 2018 Kansas Small Cities CDBG program.
Okay, so we move to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll have a public meeting for this on our next meeting, August 7th. Next item on our agenda is readiness to serve fees for water and sewer.
We have been talking about the financial sustainability of our water and sewer funds and the proposal that we are bringing to you all today to help with that is increasing our water and sewer readiness to serve fees. So there are three actions that we are asking you to do with respect to that. The first action is to consider a resolution that outlines a five-year plan for our readiness to serve fees for both water and sewer. And the reason we want to do this, the resolution is non-binding for future governing bodies, but what it does is it establishes kind of an official record of a plan to move forward to increase these readiness to serve fees over the next five years. So the way that works is currently, the water readiness to serve fee is, and probably the best way to do this, there's several, the readiness to serve fee is calculated based on the meter size that serves the property. So most of our property owners are residential properties, they will be served by a three-quarter inch or a one-inch meter, so I'll just go through that and if there's questions about other meter sizes, I can answer yours. So for example, the water readiness to serve fee is currently $7.29 for a residential customer. Phase one of the reading, I'm just calling RTS, of the RTS increase plan would go from $7.29 to $10.44. Phase two would then go to $12.01 in 2019 and then in 2021, phase three will be implemented for $13.58. Every year that the readiness to serve fee will be increased, that will require another ordinance, so the commission, the governing body at that point in time will have an opportunity to review the information and make a determination on whether or not the fees need to be increased or not. So again, this resolution is non-binding, it just sets forth that plan of action and then an ordinance will accompany the actual increase. The sewer RTS fees will be $8, they're $8.98 currently and they will go to $12.61 on the effective date of the ordinance, which will be, well, take that back, these increases will be effective September 1st for phase one. And then phase two in 2019, it'll go from $12.61 to $14.43 and then phase three in 2021, it will go from $14.43 to $16.25 for sewer RTS charges. And then with that, I can go through the other fees if you'd like, but they're ratioed based upon the size of the meter and how that lays out. So the resolution sets forth a plan and then the two ordinances that you will be considering, one is for the, well amend the readiness to serve fee for water and the other will adopt the readiness to serve fee for sewer based on that schedule.
We worked on this for what, last two work sessions?
Yeah.
And I would like you to explain to the people what happens if we do not approve these ordinances.
So as I mentioned previously, the water and sewer funds have been operating out of structural deficit and that means that the operational funds have been spending more than those two utilities rather have been bringing in revenue. And the main driver of that is the water and sewer funds have incurred additional debt over the last couple of years without... debt over the last couple of years without having revenue to offset that debt. So if, to your question, Commissioner Wilkinson, if the city does not increase revenue in either, either in the form of readiness to serve fees or volume charges, uh, the city's utilities will have to continue to spend down its reserves and in some cases, the sewer fund, for example, does not have adequate reserves to continue to do that. And so, but for reserves on hand, the city will have to use reserves from the general fund, which makes that fund less, less able to respond to unforeseen circumstances that may come up. Um, so the bottom line is, the utilities have to be able to pay their bills, one of those bills is the debt that's been incurred for various projects and if we don't increase revenue to pay that debt and those operational expenses, um, the general fund will have to offset that, uh, to do that.
Which could result in, uh, decrease in water and sewer services.
Yes, and it, it could also actually, um, affect more than just water and sewer, could also affect general governmental services because if we have to utilize the general fund reserve, we spend down that reserve and there could come a day when we have to adapt to an unforeseen circumstance, let's say a recession or a natural disaster, for example, and if we don't have enough funds, we may have to reduce general government, uh, services as well.
Thank you.
So we don't want to get into that situation, hence the need to increase revenues.
And, and the structural deficit, this structural situation that we find ourselves in is, is, uh, not just cut the operating, excuse me, cut the operating budget to, to find all that, I mean, increase revenue was, I mean, as we discussed, increase revenue is an outerly option.
Right, uh, you can only cut operational expenses so far, the citizens of El Dorado still, um, desire water to run when they turn the tap on, they still desire wastewater to go away when they flush the toilet or drain the dishwasher, for example, so there's a certain level of operational expenses that are still required to make sure those services are, are provided, we still have to operate the water plant, still have to operate the wastewater plant and in the event of a main break, we still have to repair those things. So those operational expenses, while they can be reduced somewhat, um, many of those are still fixed and as you increase debt, if you don't have revenue to offset that debt, then that's where you run into the situation.
Okay.
Okay, am I reading this right, on your basic water rate, it's gonna go up to thirteen fifty-eight and your basic sewer rate's gonna go up sixteen twenty-five and twenty, and twenty-two, so it's gonna be twenty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents for basic?
That would be correct in twenty twenty-one, that's what's projected, yes.
And then you're gonna have your water, I wish we could see an actual bill, that's what I was hoping to see, an actual bill of what somebody would be paying at that time, for their basic amount of water that they'd use?
Yeah, we did not prepare that information, um, that's something that we can definitely prepare, but we don't have that available today.
At this point, it would be whatever your water rate is plus, well, in, in twenty twenty-two, provided previous subsequent commissions approve that, I mean, that's the plan, but tonight we're not approving that much, we're approving the plan to go there, but I hear, I hear what you're saying.
And there's an important clarification today, understanding that the plan does in fact state exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Lewis, that the RTS for water will be thirteen fifty-eight in twenty twenty-one and it will be sixteen twenty-five for sewer in twenty twenty-one. Uh, the benefit, one of the benefits of a plan like this is that, um, in the event that unforeseen circumstances change on the revenue side, uh, and we are able to maintain efficiencies and costs on increase as projected, we may not necessarily have to increase our RTS fees and our volume charges as projected here, this is just a projection and as we review that on an annual basis, it may mean that we can reduce these, um, these proposed increases, uh, as we move into the future.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? The commission? We're three-part here, so I would need a motion for, uh, a resolution to approve the plan.
What's the number?
Twenty-eight forty-six.
Mister Mayor, I move to approve resolution number twenty-eight forty-six, a resolution providing a plan to modify the utility collection fees over the next five years in order to provide adequate water and sewer service in the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Second.
Case been moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. And a motion to, uh, for the water readiness to serve fees.
G twelve fifty-six.
Mister Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number G twelve fifty-six and ordinance amending chapter thirteen, oh, a title thirteen of El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to water service rates.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
All right. I need a motion for the sanitary sewer readiness to serve fees.
G twelve fifty-seven.
I move to approve ordinance number G one-two-five-seven and ordinance amending chapter thirteen dot two-zero, title thirteen of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to sewer service rates.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, next item on our agenda would be reports, any reports from the commissioners tonight.
CBB has not met since our last meeting, nor has the airport, parks and rec, everybody's on vacation, so there'll be no meeting tomorrow night, um, but I do have a couple of questions. As I drive down Central and I drive down Main Street, I see businesses that no longer exist, but their signs are still up. Is there an ordinance in the city that says, once the business is no longer there, the signs need to come down?
If, if it's showing signs of damage or, or disrepair, then there is ordinance that they need to address that, um, something that we could enforce. We haven't gone after it rigorously over the last number of years, um, as far as of businesses that close that still have their sign up, but, um, you will see a windstorm or something, or some damage and we try to address those.
And I've received two phone calls concerning, concerning the lighting at North Main Park's flash pad. I have not been there during, after dark, so I don't know, but I just know a couple of people called saying they don't think it's bright enough.
It's passing off at eight-thirty.
Yeah, it should be off at dusk, so.
Maybe that's why they're calling me, there's not enough light, okay.
The, the spray feature themselves, but, um, I think there is probably a light on the bathroom, um, in the pump house for the spray part.
Okay, they may not have understood that. I will pass that on, thank you. That's all.
I'll just say real quick, um, kudos to our CBB crew, Molly and Caitlin and was it Shelby? Their hard work and I saw a lot of city staff involved, Drums Across Kansas last night and all the other volunteers and folks involved, I thought it was well attended, a great show and of course, we're gonna have a busy week next week with the Shrine Bowl coming to town and Damn Music Fest and I would just encourage business owners and folks in the community to kind of extend a warm welcome, we have a lot of visitors, a lot of folks that are from outside of town, so do your best to make them feel welcome and have a great week, enjoy the festivities, that's all I have.
Nick, can I?
No.
I've had a few complaints about the compost burn going up towards the north end of town, not pat on the west side but is on the north end, is there something we can do about that?
You know, I don't know if it was purposely ignited or if it was a incident, I, I haven't, I don't know anything about it, other than the, the smell. I think, well, we can definitely talk to Brad and, and see what the circumstances are. If, if they were running out of room or, as you guys are aware, the thing ignites spontaneously sometimes or it gets help sometimes, so.
How is vandalism's at the park? Is that cut down?
To my knowledge, and I hate to say anything because, um, we, it's been quiet, so, uh, I don't want to encourage anyone to take that as invitation, we haven't really had...
But it's good to know the community is keeping an eye out for the parks.
Okay. Well, I would echo Chase's comments about the, the, the Drums Across Kansas, it was a spectacular performance and kudos to all the work that went into that, um, it'd be great if we could continue to find a way to, to host that, that performance, that show, as we look into the future. And yes, we've got stuff coming up, we're gonna have a town full of visitors and, uh, we hope to roll out the red carpets as much we can, keep our flowers watered, all those things that make us great, um, parade is coming, uh, Shrine Parade, there's a lot of, a lot of, with the Shrine Bowl, there are a lot of activities, so I would encourage everybody to, is that, is that scheduled posted on our, on, uh, Channel Seven, what's gonna happen that week?
It's on Channel Seven, it's on all of our social media.
Great.
It's on posters all across town.
Good, I've seen on some posters, but I mean, just, uh, rolling on Channel Seven would be a great thing to, uh, as we look forward to that. Add to that, other activities going on at the lake, I think the veterans are in town this coming weekend, so, uh, when you see them as they stop to get groceries or gas or whatever in town, uh, it's an opportunity to think of that and, uh, take that opportunity. Main Street has got steak feet coming up this Friday and they've got, and then the, the frontier western days is in a couple, a couple of weeks, so we still have, and the fair is in town, so everybody look forward to, uh, to a busy couple of weeks, that's all I have for reports. Anything from City Manager Board?
Yeah, just some, some statistics, uh, Drums Across Kansas sold one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine tickets and if you're counting, that's twenty-two percent more than the one thousand six hundred and eleven tickets that were sold last year, uh, eighty suite tickets were sold to the pub, well, were sold both to suite owners and the general public, so, uh, we have a more attended event and it was, uh, as you have all already articulated, a pretty cool event. Uh, you've also already articulated the Shrine Bowl activities scheduled throughout next week, we've got, um, the kids coming in, we've got both teams coming in, they'll be practicing throughout the week, the bands will be practicing, or the band, I guess, will be practicing, um, as well, so they'll be out and about and doing their thing, but we also have a number of events for the public, I don't have the full schedule here, but I do have a couple of, I have a summary, uh, we have a golf tournament at Parade Trails on Friday and then Saturday's events include a five K walk around in the morning, the Shrine Bowl Parade, uh, later that morning, Junior All-Star Challenge, and then finally the main event, the Shrine Bowl East versus West All-Star Football Game. Information can be found on the city's website at eldoKS.com, in addition, you can call the city at, uh, three-two-one-nine-one-hundred and we'll get you the full information if, if you have any questions or want to inquire about events or activities going on. Um, and then finally, the, we're gonna have a special thing after this meeting tonight, uh, the commission will be touring the El Dorado Disc Golf Course at Legion Park, I know a couple of you have notified that you may not be able to go, but, um, wanted to let the public know that the commission's gonna tour the course tonight and then we're gonna have a soft opening sometime between now and in the next couple of weeks as the course finalizes its installation and then we'll have a grand opening for the course on August eighteenth and that'll be kind of a, August twelfth, August twelfth, um, that'll be kind of a big celebration, we'll have some fun activities going on and then, um, we'll have some, maybe a tournament coming up shortly after that, so, a lot of fun coming up and as you mentioned, we have a lot of other activities, Shrine Bowl, Damn Music Fest, um, so there'll be a lot going on in town.
Yeah.
I've got a question for you, Chase. I've got a, a lot of people ask me about that, where are they gonna park out there at the lake?
Ooh, I don't know.
Do you have any?
I don't think.
I think the answer is anywhere they can find a spot.
There's, there's a lot of maps and that, and there would be a lot of people out there directing traffic, showing where the water park, they've, they've got quite a bit of security hired for the event.
I think, well, I, go ahead.
Yeah, the majority of the Walnut River area that's not campground sites or not for this day, the rest of it's gonna be parking. And they've got a contractor that's, that's laid that all out, um, I assume it'll be striked in some manner, I think they talked about that early on, with that being lake property, they're working those details out with those folks.
And I would encourage, you know, I think there's a lot of people that have a lot of questions and I, I don't know any of their plans other than what everyone else knows, but I would, uh, usually the best way to communicate with festivals, like weekends, through their Facebook page, post on their wall, because a lot of people are asking the same questions and they're usually monitoring that kind of in current time throughout the day, so they'll give you an answer and then you always kind of have it there to refer back to when they say, that's not what we're doing, you said, well, you said that.
There's been some concern with vintage places, people park it and take a walking path back up in there.
Yeah, it would be, the, the, the bike path was a concern early on and, and, uh, like Tabitha mentioned, they'll have a number of hired security out there to monitor that.
Great, well, we do, uh, have a, have a trip to the, the Disc Golf Course, looking forward to that, there are three of us going instead of five, so...
I guess that's, that's a good question, how many are going, because depending on the number, we may have to recess and, and what's the word, re?
Adjourn.
Reconvene, out the golf course.
You're not going and Nick's not going, so we just need an adjournment.
So we don't need, we can scratch that item, which is to recess and just move for adjournment.
Mister? I'm moving adjourned.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned, thank you.